Good evening and welcome to the March tenth, two thousand and twenty twenty city council meeting. And the first order of business would be the roll call.
Bartlet.
Here.
Boersma.
Here.
Caravelo.
Here.
Do.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Legaki.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
And our voices are all coming from different areas.
And my ask is absentee voting for the vote.
Okay, thank you. We have a quorum, and there are no presentations tonight, so we'll go into communications. I know Chief Luck has the communication.
Yeah, just real briefly, I just wanted to update what our public safety departments are doing in the city regarding the coronavirus. We are monitoring and working with Dane County Public Health, and we're still categorized in Dane County as low risk. I wanted to point that out right away, but we do have contingency plans in place for our staff and also for exposures if we would happen to start seeing them in our jurisdiction. Just keeping it in perspective, there's been only three confirmed cases in all of Dane County so far. We actually expect that to rise in the future, but it's nowhere near panic mode or anything like that, and we just wanted to make sure that the council and the Alders were aware that the public safety departments are monitoring everything very closely.
Thank you. And our clerk Holly has a couple of communications.
Sure. In-person absentee voting for the presidential primary and spring election will start on March sixteenth. That's the first day to cast a ballot in the clerk's office and goes through April third. We will also have absentee hours on Saturday, March twenty-eighth, from nine to two at City Hall, and extended hours the week of March thirtieth until six P.M. at City Hall. Another announcement is that Alder Riley resigned. He resigned on February twenty-eighth, I believe was the date.
Okay, thank you. Do any Alders have any communications tonight? Alder Person Healy.
Yeah, I had a couple other things to say about the coronavirus. I know that we haven't had community transmission locally yet, which is good, but if we do see that, that means the person has already had the virus for up to two weeks. So we should have our, definitely have our plans in order, which I'm glad we do have the emergency plans. To give the extent of how far behind we are on testing, South Korea had a really bad outbreak. They've started to move the curve down on that, but to do that successfully, they've tested three hundred times more people per capita than we have in the U.S. And this is a public health crisis that intersects with an existing social crisis, and each crisis reinforces the other. So I think we need to really look at how this affects the people on the razor's edge. Study last year found that forty percent of people in the U.S. can't come up with four hundred dollars for an emergency without going into debt. And if you're out of work for two weeks, that's one, two thousand dollars that you'd need to come up with, the average person. A lot of kids rely on school for a reliable source of food. We need to think about that if the schools end up being quarantined. And the people really most likely to be spreading this disease are people who can't afford to stay home. People who work in food service, ride share, retail, home health, face-to-face jobs that are really crucial, but the people are treated like garbage, don't have paid sick time, very, really very serious social crisis that is feeding this. So I think that our public health response has to include some accommodation of that. We'd be much better shape with a single payer healthcare system, in my opinion. So Congress has approved money. They're looking at a stimulus. Wisconsin has a projected state surplus that the governor and legislator, legislature have been fighting over. I think we should lobby them to tap into that money to allow workers to take proper precautionary measures. If they do have symptoms, stay home, take care of loved ones, and not worry about losing their home. Larger companies should offer paid quarantine time. Some are already doing this, and I think we should do what we can as a city with our contingency fund to offer the same for affected city workers. And hopefully, hopefully money comes from above for that, but I think we should do what we can. I think we as a city, or maybe the state, I don't know who's in charge of this exactly, should look into a moratorium on evictions of people who need to quarantine themselves or care for others. This is really potentially serious, and I think we should treat it that way. Otherwise, we're especially putting our elderly residents at risk. You know, this is, it's serious, and that's why I'm talking about it. So I think we should call special meetings of the Public Safety Committee and the council to discuss this further and potentially fast-track communications with the school board as well. So I think there's a lot of coordination to be done. Our city's emergency plan is kind of a generalized medical emergency, and a lot of medical emergencies are a one-time thing that happens, you deal with the aftermath. But this is, this would be a long grind of an emergency if it ends up getting bad. And, you know, containment, the way containment works is if you do it right, people go, oh, that was it? What's the big deal? And hopefully, that's what we do, you know? But we gotta be prepared for otherwise.
Okay, thank you. Alder Person Hirsch.
I would like to commend Elder Healy for bringing this to attention and your eloquence in presenting the material, and I wholeheartedly support this. I think we should send this off to the Public Safety Committee right away, and maybe they can have a, maybe Greg can lead that, have a special meeting to start addressing this, and then we can have a community of the whole, and see and tell. Tom isn't here today, you can get that going as well.
So that's a good idea. I like that. Alder Person Boersma.
Yeah, I respect Ben for what he said. My objection to what he did say is that a single payer healthcare system is a very contentious issue. This is a nonpartisan group, and I would prefer to leave national politics out of our discussions.
Anybody else have a communication tonight? Okay, here none. We'll move into the agenda. Minutes and reports are in the packet. We do have a public comment period, and we have a number of people signed up to speak tonight. And let me just briefly review the rules. We ask that when you come up, you state your complete name. I believe I have all the addresses, so don't worry about that. And then we allow three, up to three minutes for each person to speak on the issue. Holly has flashcards, so she'll give you a warning when your time is running out, and we ask that we respect our time. We want you to have the ability to speak, but we also want to have time for everyone else to speak and for the council to conduct their business. Having said that, the first person would be Sharon, you can come on up and...
Thank you. The change report being...
Oh, okay. We'll do that when Sharon's not...
My name is Sharon Mason Boersma. I live, oh, I don't need to repeat my address.
We have it.
Two forty-three East McKinley Street, Stoughton. Thank you. I'm the president of Kiwanis Club of Stoughton, and we're having an event that is coming up on Saturday, March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, at the Stoughton area, the high school cafeteria. It is from seven thirty A.M. to eleven A.M. It's our annual fundraiser, and it's the Stoughton Pancake Breakfast. And I just invite all of you to come with your families. I'm really excited about it this year. We've had a lot of generosity and support from businesses, from nonprofit organizations to put this on, and we also have, which is a big draw for this event, the Trinity Irish Dancers. They're coming at nine A.M. and at ten fifteen A.M. to dance and perform. We have them every year. Stoughton Kiwanis Club is a service club that's been around since the year of two thousand, and so it's our twentieth anniversary this year. And we're really blessed to have Mayor Swadley come and speak regarding service clubs and the need for them in our community and what they provide to the community. And also, we're having the mayor of Middleton, Gerdip Brower, who's also going to be present. He's a big Kiwanis Club member, and so he is also going to be coming. We're going to have some speakers also come who have been involved in Action Club, which is like a sub-club for Kiwanis that helps people who are cognitively delayed, and it's the only social club that has a service club to provide that. And we also have the Key Club, and we sponsor Key Club members from the Stoughton High School, grades nine through twelve, and they do community projects, and they also provide leadership skills in our community. And so we are, we are really coming together, and again, Kiwanis Club is proud of this event, which we also have other youth projects, as the Flyers passed out, say, the Easter Egg Hunt, the Kite Day, the Disc Golf Tournament, Pictures and Crafts at Santa's Workshop. We take pictures of families. But this is our big event. We usually have about three hundred to four hundred people this year. So come and celebrate this event with us. We're very, very excited about it, and we also thank the Stoughton High School Cafeteria for allowing us to have this, as well as many other businesses and organizations that will be acknowledged at this event. We also have four gift baskets that we'll have a silent auction for. Again, all of these things have been donated by various people around the community, and I want to also thank Mayor Swadley for setting up his time to do this for us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. As I mentioned, we do have a number of people to speak, and I believe they all want to speak on the same topic, so before we bring them up, Holly wanted to mention something.
I just wanted to point out that under minutes and reports, so two B, there is the Public Safety Committee report regarding the alcohol beverage license proceedings for Shaker Saloon LLC, and then two C is the objection and report from Shaker Saloon LLC. So I just wanted to point out that those are in your packet. The council is not taking any action on those tonight, but it will be back before the council at our next meeting. So I just wanted to point those, that out, that those are in your packet, and you should be reviewing those.
Okay, thank you. So the next person to come up would be Nicholas. If you just want to state your full name, you might need to adjust the microphone. Does that work? Everybody hear me?
A little bit closer if you can. Can you guys hear him?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Nicholas Watt. I'm the attorney who represents Shaker Saloon LLC. As the clerk indicated, you're set to hear arguments in a way that you choose later tonight in regards to whether I will be submitting arguments in writing, in person in a couple of weeks to you all, or both. But again, I'm not here to argue that today. What I'm here today to do is support Agenda Item Number Eighteen for approval, which is the approval of Mr. Bradley Dilman as the agent for the alcohol liquor license held currently by Shaker Saloon LLC. The former agent Dale Kittelson, if you read through your materials in your, in your handouts, in your books, was the reason or is the main cause of why we're going to be here in a couple of weeks. In the meantime, he has resigned as agent. He has divested his interest in the corporation. Mr. Meyer, the sole remaining member, and one of the three managers, along with the other two managers, Mr. Dilman and Mr. Quizzling, are here today. Some of them, if not all of them, I think, have submitted sheets to speak today. Anyway, this is kind of the last step of the puzzle. Obviously, in a couple of weeks, you're going to decide whether to revoke Shaker Saloon LLC's license. In the meantime, it needs an agent to operate, and so we're asking, and I would ask for this council's approval, to approve Mr. Dilman. I'm sure he will state his credentials when he makes his comments, but he has been an insurance agent for several years. He is subject to the rules and regulations and the oversight of the officer of insurance, Officer Commissioner of Insurance, so we feel that he is certainly adequate and has the reputation to fulfill the role as agent, certainly for the next two or three weeks, and obviously, should this council give Shaker Saloon a reprieve in a couple of weeks on into the future until its license would be up for renewal at the end of June. So again, my name's Nicholas Watt, and I would ask that the council approve Agenda Item Eighteen authorizing and approving Mr. Bradley Dilman as the agent for the Shaker Saloon LLC liquor license. So, thank you.
Okay. The next to speak, I believe it's Janelle or Jeanette. Sure, come on up.
Thank you for having me, Mayor and Council. I'm stepping, coming forward today on behalf of the Shaker Saloon and being a taxpayer and a homeowner in the city. I believe that they have done amazing things with this bar that had a really black mark on it with the hotel and everything associated with that over the course of the years, and the owners of the bar have done some pretty remarkable things with cleaning it up, making it very enjoyable to go into the bar, enjoying music. There has been events such as jazz bands that have gone in there and done jams and Super Bowl party, and it's just been a real refreshing place to go, other than some of the other establishments that have, kind of have a dark spot. And so seeing this and seeing how hard they worked to clean this up in a pristine manner in this bar, I would like to see it continue for the city of Stoughton and myself and others to go and enjoy the establishment as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And next would be Christopher.
Christopher Lipsky, I'm, I live on thirty-one ninety-eight Duncan Road. So I too have been going to this establishment for probably over six, seven months. I think they, someone else took it over, but we do a lot of karaoke there, and I know we never have any issues with disruptions when I've been there, and it's been on Thursdays and Sundays is when they've been doing it. Sundays now, so that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Next is Vicki.
My name is Vicki Elsing, and I also go to Shakers, and I've never felt threatened or seen any bad doings going on there. I've always felt safe. It's a real nice environment, and Steve has done an awesome job with cleaning this place up. He's worked his butt off, and we always feel safe there, and I think they should be able to stay open. Thank you.
Thank you. And next would be Philip.
I'm Philip Elsing, and I'd pretty well say what they've already said already, but we, we, like Bradley in that he goes out on his way, trying to have different menus all the time, and Steve, it's been like home. I haven't missed a karaoke thing out there since they've been open, and they've, they're just about like family, you know? I appreciate it, and there's not many other places in town you can do it, so I just appreciate it and hope you keep it going on, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be, I believe it's Renee.
I want to, I'm Renee Johnson. I'm from Stoughton, lived here sixty years. My parents own a farm two miles out of town, and I'm the one that runs the karaoke. It's my business. Shakers has hired me, and all of my followers come. My followers range from forty years old, Bud is the oldest, she was ninety-six. And all the time I've been down there, I haven't witnessed any kind of drug or criminal behavior at all. My people wouldn't come. They're older people, but they love to sing, they love to dance, they love to enjoy. It's a social gathering, and it's a big family, is what it is. And Steve and Brad are doing everything. As far as, they've taken advice from me. I was in, I was a food and beverage manager for forty years, and so they've taken advice from me, they've asked me questions, and I'm actually going to advocate, advocate for all entertainment places in Stoughton. There's nothing here that people can go out and enjoy. And with the way the economy is and the depression and the drug overdoses, we need some, something where people can go and have fun and relax, have a nice dinner. You know, everybody doesn't drink, but they go out and they enjoy the food. Personally, I don't drink myself, but there's nobody I've seen at any of my shows that get out of line. They're there having fun, and I trust Steve and Brad. Their hearts are in this, and I've had in-depth conversations with them. But I would like to see this community advocate for everyone and not just a few. Like I said, I've been here my whole life. I was born in the Stoughton hospital. I went to high school, I graduated from Stoughton High School. So I'm a Stoughtonite, and my parents were before me, so please consider what I'm saying. And I, I gotta say, I am so appreciative of the coronavirus things you're doing. I have an eighty-year-old, eighty-nine-year-old mom that I'm taking care of, and I'm, I'm really concerned about it, so I appreciate all the efforts there. And I think information is a big thing. You need to get the information out there for everybody. And what I'm doing, because I have mics, karaoke, I am constantly disinfecting everything, Lysol, hand wipes, because I certainly don't want to spread anything. So I appreciate your time, and I hope you consider what I've said. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Steve?
Last time I was scolded for getting too close to the microphone, and well, I guess I did it again. Sorry. I want to thank everybody for giving us the opportunity to be here, Chief, everybody, Mayor. It has been, it's, we went in there and cleaned that place up. It was, it was nasty, it was a mess. It took me two months. I invested a lot of money into this. I run other companies in Madison. Meyer Painting and Drywall has been servicing Madison and all of Dane County for thirty years. I am a Marine veteran and disabled Marine veteran, been shot in combat. Nonetheless, my, my honor is to serve, whether it's in Stoughton. I don't own that bar. Stoughton owns that bar. I can't do anything without any of you. I, I, I ask for mercy. There was a problem that we had there that we have no more. I have a signed, signed contract here that Dale is no longer part of the company. I'm one hundred percent owner, signed. We, he has not been on the premise, and he will not be on the premise unless you dictate. When I first came in here, I asked for you guys to dictate what you wanted. Well, I heard loud and clear. I'm, I'm not dumb, and neither have anybody that I work with, and I heard loud and clear, and I learned a valuable lesson. I would appreciate it tonight if you guys reconsider or consider us to move on and to bring bands into Stoughton. That, working with promoters, we might get foreigner here. I'd like to do all those things, but I'd like to be given the opportunity. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate working with all of you, and we're just getting started. I know my, my, you guys will, in June, I believe it is, we're up for reevaluation, and I would appreciate those months to prove it to you that we can do what Chief and everybody in this room and everyone in the city is crying for. And we've never had a problem. I've never had a police call. Matter of fact, I guess I had one police call Sunday night. I invited, I called dispatch, and I wanted the police officers, thank you, ma'am, I wanted the police officers to come down and experience what we do on Sunday nights. And we had a lot of town folks in the bar having a good time, and three officers showed up, and I introduced myself, and I showed them what else we do. So that's it. Thank you for your time, folks. If you ever get a chance, Brad makes the best wings in the city, and from what the Health Department said, I have the coldest beer. But, so thank you, folks. Thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Yeah, Bradley?
As the potential new agent of the liquor license, I'd like to give a little background on myself. I've been an insurance agent for the past ten years. I, and again, like Nick said, I am held to a higher standard, a fiduciary responsibility to not only the business that I insure, but as a, an agent of the liquor license, an agent of the corporation, there is just no way that there is going to be any coherting with any type of bad element in that establishment. It will not happen, it cannot happen, and it will not happen under my watch. And as Steve had mentioned, you know, we are at your mercy, and Dale Kittelson, this will be the only time I'll ever mention his name. I will not ever mention it again, because it pisses me off. He will not be on site unless you guys let him be on site, and my recommendation is that you can escort him if you'd like, because he's got personal property on there that he has, he's entitled to, but he's not coming on there unless you tell him he can be on there, and you escort him. And again, all I can say is that, give us a chance, that bad element is gone. We want to, we, we're community-type people. Steve volunteers, he mentors people, he has twenty people that he mentors, I help out at my church, I volunteered for many years at my church doing Iwana, food pantry, I take food to the homeless. So we're good people, just that there was a bad element that is no longer... Just that there was a bad element that is no longer part of the Shaker, you know, family. He's been divested and will no longer be allowed in the city of Stoughton unless you guys allow him to be. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak tonight that hasn't spoke? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our agenda item. The consent agenda is in the packet, so I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So I move.
Second.
Motion by Jensen and the second by Haley. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Item number five is ordinance two of 2020. And that comes from Landmarks Commission, Alder Person Legaki.
This is ordinance two of 2020. We are amending the section 38-32 and 38-36A of the Historic Preservation Ordinance, Chapter 38 of the Stoughton Municipal Code. Landmark recommended approval at five to zero. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves. Alder Person Legaki, did you want to walk us through this? I noticed Peggy's here as well, if you need assistance.
Second reading. When we encountered the powerhouse questions earlier this year, we worked with the attorney and in looking closely at this ordinance, we found some confusing language and he guided us. And the committee took that guidance and we further tried to clarify these definitive points. That's really what this ordinance is about on those four issues of what improvement, improvement parcel, landmark and landmark site is. Peggy and I briefly talked, I'm not sure that if there's anything she would like to add, I would invite her to do so, but really very straightforward, these are definitions to better make the ordinance cohesive.
Alder Person Hirsch?
I just have a question, because I see in the packet on the, after the ordinance, there is a letter from Attorney Matt Dregney. Were his ideas folded into this new ordinance? So all those ideas were in, it was a lot of language, I just wasn't able to go back and forth to make sure everything was captured.
Not only was it folded in, we consulted him again and asked him to let us know specifically as we were dealing with the powerhouse issue, where he saw the potential points of what was confusing perhaps around like what is a landmark and what is a landmark site. And so he specifically drafted a letter, spent some time and that guided. And so more than folded in, I would help, I would, I would be willing to sort of help structure it. Okay, thank you.
Alder Person Borzema?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I really, I just, I guess I would like a summary of, if somebody wants to apply for changes in their building structure, I know we've had some discussions about this as to what the process is to get a modification allowance by landmarks, how long that would take. And so I guess I would like to, if Peggy could talk to, talk about that, that might be nice. I know we had talked, I had, I had come to a number of landmarks meetings and I know that we had talked about a process and how fast or how quickly somebody could get a variance on, or an allowance to change a structure, so. And I hate to put you on the spot, but I, if we could just summarize that.
I, I actually would need to look at our ordinance to see what our review period is. So you're asking about a process if someone wants to make repair or change to a landmark.
Correct, yeah.
So the process is, they come into the city for a permit. And when they do that, their address is, the address of the property is checked against their landmarks list. And if it's a landmark, it's sort of flagged for needing a certificate of appropriateness. And that is simply a process where the commission reviews the project and approves the project before they can get their permit. So the applicant needs to fill out that paperwork. It's basically a description of the project, what are they proposing to do? And then that's submitted to Michael Stacy, who includes it with the, to the landmarks packet. Now, I mentioned in our ordinance, we have, there's a review period that we have.
Sixty days.
Sixty days, thank you. So we have a 60-day review period. We have never, ever taken a 60-day review period. We typically get items onto our agenda sometimes as early as a day or so when Michael has to distribute the agenda and post that public meeting. So we will look at things very, very quickly. We also hold special meetings, and we've done that numerous times over the last few years, for people who failed to think about coming in for a permit. And then when they did, encountered problems that, oh, they have to have this project reviewed. And we have called special meetings in order to accommodate those property owners as quickly as possible. So the commission is incredibly responsive to owners of local landmarks. Once we get those projects, the commission reviews them against our ordinance and against the standards for appropriate work. And we ask the applicant to come in so we can ask questions if necessary. And sometimes they can clarify things for us that aren't, don't come through in the application, in the, in the certificate of appropriateness form that they have to fill out. And in my time on the commission, we've never denied a COA. We, sometimes we're able to help an applicant improve their project so that it meets the standards. And we work with them to do that and we approve their project and they get their permit. So they're able to, you know, after our meeting, they're able to come in the next day to get their building permit because the letter's on file.
The only thing I would add is that a denial is appealable to the council.
Yes. So if there's ever a situation where we think that the project will not be approved, it doesn't meet the standards, the first thing we do is we work with them to figure out, what are you trying to do? What's your goal? What's your project? Because we can help them reach their goal while following the standards for appropriate repair to historic buildings. So that's always our first step. And that's, and that has been successful. If there's ever a situation where, you know, we can't come to an agreement and, and they just are proposing work we can't approve, we deny that request and they can, of course, appeal to this body.
And one more question then, does it, does it go to planning first?
No.
I mean, does it go to planning? If you deny it, it'll go directly to council?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I was, I was looking for that 60-day timeline response. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I have a few and we've talked about a couple of them. So when we're looking at the definition, it says landmark meets, means an improvement and improvement parcel or both. So what I'm trying to do is sort out in my mind what the criteria will be to determine if it's just the building or it's the building and the parcel or just the parcel. So it could be any one of those three as I understand it. So I'm gonna, I'm trying to understand how the commission is going to make that determination.
Well, we have never landmarked a property that's not a building. So if we're landmarking something, it's landmarked a building.
Or you haven't done a site, for example?
So a site would be an example of, like, an archaeological site. I suppose a cemetery could be, you know, included as a historic site. But we have not, we have not looked at anything like that. We haven't looked at a site, we haven't looked at an archaeological site. And so everything that we've landmarked have been buildings. The ordinance allows for building structures, sites such as archaeological sites.
So the, the change here is going to allow you to do the building and the parcel?
So the change doesn't really change anything. What it does is clarify the language in the ordinance. So we've always landmarked properties with their parcel. That has been the standard procedure for the entire history of the Landmarks Commission. In fact, I have some, I have some information for you. 1979 is the year that Stoughton created a landmarks ordinance. 1981, we had our first designated landmark. We now have 32 landmarks in the city of Stoughton. So we have had a landmarks ordinance for 41 years. The first landmark was designated 39 years ago. So for 39 years, the commission has been using the parcel to define the nominated property. This update to clarify the definitions in our ordinance, that's what this is. And, and this, so this definition clarification is part of that effort to follow modern standards consistent with how landmarks has been designating in Stoughton for 39 years. Our process is consistent, nothing is changing. We are just trying to have more explicit wording in our ordinance. So for 39 years having landmarks, 41 years having an ordinance, we have never a single time ever had a problem with our ordinance or for a landmark owner having any issues with the way we are addressing landmarks. So this is not a change, it is a clarification of the language in the ordinance to make it more clear that when we nominate a property as a landmark, it's the building and its parcel. That's all this is.
So the example that we talked about was the 1892 building. So on that particular landmark, is it the building and the entire River Bluff campus? Or how do you define, because the parcel is the entire campus with the exception of the maintenance building.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to understand in practicality how that would work if the school district wanted to do something on their parcel, for example, would they have to come to landmarks?
So there are only a few examples in the city of sort of an unusual parcel situation. For the most part, we have homes that are local landmarks and we have buildings, commercial buildings on Main Street. And those landmarks, you know, when you use the parcel, it's the house and its yard. For commercial buildings on Main Street, they're typically built out to the property line. And so we use the parcel, they fill the parcel. So we use the parcel as the nominated property, as the boundary for the nominated property. For those few oddballs that we have in the city, including this 1892 high school, including the power plant, what I would do is I would go back to whatever year the property was landmarked and I would look at what was the parcel. Well, I'd look at the landmark form first and see what the landmark form says about what's being nominated. Then to determine the parcel from the time of nomination, I'd be looking at, let's say the school was nominated in, you know, 1990, I would look at what was the parcel in 1990? Because of course, as we know, parcels can change. They change over time. They're split up, people combine parcels to make a bigger parcel, they change. So I'd be looking at what was the parcel in 1990 when that building was landmarked? And, you know, looking to define that, that parcel from what was the parcel then? If there was some issue with the parcel perhaps being too large, we would simply go through, if it was requested of us, the same process we went through with the power plant. We'd look at the building, what makes sense, what makes up the historic setting for this building? And can we create a smaller, a smaller nominated boundary to exclude, you know, many, perhaps many acres of land that just aren't necessary as part of the nominated boundary?
Okay, so on the buildings that have already been landmarked, so you're telling me that the ordinance clarifies, are those buildings landmarked with only the building or are they currently landmarked with the parcel?
They've always been landmarked with the parcel, always, since day one. Always. If you look at the landmark nominations, it says the parcel.
And when the, when you do a landmark, do the, the owners of the building, do they have a say other than they can appeal to the council? How does your process work? Do you approach them? Do they approach you? Is there an agreement or can, how does that work?
When a property is being nominated as a landmark? State law requires that we can nominate properties as landmarks without owner consent. So it's part of this concept of, that landmarks create an environment for the public good. So we can nominate properties without owner consent. In practice, we do not landmark properties unless the owner has indicated that they're interested in that designation. Because it's not worth creating bad feelings for people. So our experience has been people coming to us and saying, we would like our property landmarked or reaching out to a property owner to discuss it with them and to see if this is something they would like to do. We have never once nominated a property as a local landmark with the owner of that building opposing that designation.
That's all I had. Does anybody else have any questions? So there is a motion and a second. It's an ordinance, so we have to vote by a roll call.
Borzema?
Aye.
Harry Bello?
Aye.
Doom?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Legaki?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Schumacher?
Aye.
Bartlet?
Aye.
Motion carries, ten oh.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance three of 2020 comes from Utilities.
I'm wondering if we could move items 18 and 19 up since we have so many interested people?
Sure, we can. Everybody okay with that?
It doesn't matter.
It's, it's, yeah, 18 and 19, we'll do that. So 18 is 48 of 2020. And that's coming from, well, it didn't go through committee and we can kind of walk you through why it didn't. Normally in the past it has. And did you want to kind of talk about that, Holly or Matt?
This is the appointment of agent for QuickTrip and Shakers?
Yeah, we're gonna, just Shakers.
I would prefer that we, if we're going to do that, because they are similar and we all have the same issue with it, 17 and 18 can be done.
Do 17, then 18, and then 19? That's fine. So we'll start with 17, which is QuickTrip. So if you want to just kind of walk us through why we're approving them tonight and we didn't take them through the committee, which is better past practice.
So first with respect to QuickTrip though, is this also the, this is a?
Change of agent.
Change of agent.
So this is a change of agent because the agent is no longer employed at QuickTrip?
Right. So I reviewed the statute with Holly yesterday. It was, there was language in the statute that neither one of us were familiar with that indicates that when there's a request for a change of agent, such that, so, so the way it works is the, the licensee has the ability to appoint a new agent. That appointment then is, appears to be valid until the next regular or special council meeting. And then the statute says that if that agent appointment isn't approved at the next regular or special council meeting, then the license is deemed essentially suspended until such time as the council does take action approving that appointment. Again, not a process that either one of us Again, not a process that either one of us were familiar. I think the practice historically has been that when there's a request for either appointment of a new agent or a change of agent, that, that goes to the committee and then the committee makes a recommendation to the council. We also have a background investigation, I think by the police department for, for those. And that's been our historical process. In, in this particular case, due, I think in part to the unique circumstances we're presented with with Shakers, we, we looked carefully at the statutory process and, and realized that if we don't put the, both the QuickTrip and the, and the other one on the agenda tonight and take action, then under the statute, those licenses would be suspended for the next couple of weeks till we can meet again. So my recommendation was, let's put them on the agenda, let's try and process them. And I think the police department was able to do quickly background investigations. I'll let the chief speak to that, but.
Yeah, we, we were able to do the background investigations. But I guess my question is, is under the city ordinances though, that's a different process than what we've used. And the process we've used in the past is cited in fourteen thirty-six, print twelve. That it goes to the committee first before it comes to the body. And that would be my only question is that, and if the ordinance is incorrect, then we should probably consider changing the ordinance. But if that's the ordinance that's in place right now, is there a reason why we shouldn't be following it?
Well, the reason is again, and this will be up to the council. I, I don't believe there's, the statute doesn't compel the council to take action on, on, on this tonight for QuickTrip or for Shakers. But if you don't, then neither of those entities will have a license after the meeting tonight. And they will therefore not be able to sell beer or alcohol until such time as the next council meeting and the matter can be taken up. So we do have this unfortunate circumstance. I agree, it's not the ideal that we see this conflict between our ordinance process and what the statute says. But I think we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. So my advice, my recommendation is that if the council believes it has sufficient information, including the background investigation, to make a judgment about the agent and can make a decision tonight, then make the decision. If you feel that you don't have sufficient information because more investigation or inquiry is needed, then I think you table the matter until you can get that information, knowing that we then have a license suspension that would, that would flow from that until this can come back to the council.
Because of the ordinance though, wouldn't it be proper to have, the council would waive the requirement in the ordinance? And then move on, is that, is that the proper procedure?
Well, you would effectively be waiving that if you acted on these tonight. And, and one reason that I'm giving the statute, statute kind of priority over the ordinance is chapter one twenty-five does say that although the city has the ability to adopt ordinances relating to this area, it can't do so if those ordinances are inconsistent with chapter one twenty-five. So I don't, so I think we're stuck with what the chap, what the statute says on the suspension issue. Whether the council, I don't think you have to formally choose to waive the ordinance process. If you go ahead and consider and act on these applications, you will effectively be deciding to do that though. That's true, you will be effectively deciding to say, we're gonna, we're not gonna follow our, our ordinance with respect to going to committee first. Now you could choose, you know, again, you could choose to say, we're gonna follow our ordinance and we're gonna send these to committee, we're gonna refer these to committee before we make a decision. I just need you to be aware what the consequence of that is. That when we then have a suspension that wasn't really anticipated by you or the applicants. And, and so we're kind of in that position.
Chief, you said it was fourteen?
Thirty-six, print twelve.
Thirty-six, twelve, okay. If you want to see that or not, but I don't know if it matters.
I haven't, I mean, I can look at it again, yeah, so.
I think it's this one here.
Is this for, is this for?
It's our ordinance.
That's for any application? It's not specific to a? For liquor license, so it's not specific to a renewal of an agent?
The, the whole ordinance is silent when it comes to agents, so.
So, so the, the ordinance that speaks to referral to a committee deals with license applications generally, I guess, I would say? And doesn't call out specifically a change of agent application?
But that is a change of license.
It is a change of agent. So I don't know, you know, whether the ordinance, honestly chief, I, I didn't have a chance to look at the ordinance. I just looked at the statute.
Okay.
So.
So I guess it's really up to the, up to the council and what you want to do.
Yeah, it's up to the council.
So the first one is, is there anything else you wanted to add?
I don't think so.
Okay, so the first item is R. forty-seven of twenty twenty. So I guess I would look to see if anybody wanted to make a motion on that resolution.
I'll make the motion so we can at least have a discussion on it. See resolution forty-seven twenty twenty authorizing and directing the proper city officials to appoint Matthew Hawks as the agent for QuickTrip Inc. Doing business as QuickTrip number seven thirty-eight located at one thirty-one East Main Street.
And there was a second by Alder Person Hiley. And any discussion on this? Did you have anything Greg, otherwise we'll go down the table?
I conflicted. I can understand the urgency to do it. I, I'm just disappointed that, you know, it's not going through committee. I, I mean, that, that's, that's been our practice. So I think we need to address this. And I'm going to recommend that we have this as a committee meeting or as a committee agenda item for our next public safety committee. I, I don't know, I, I, I don't want to put them in jeopardy. I don't know, I'll leave it up to anybody else.
All right, Alder Person Hirsch?
Um, I guess I didn't see and hear Chief Lux.
Did you have a chance to put it in?
Have you have a chance to review the application and?
For QuickTrip?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was nothing in there that would warrant a recommendation of denial.
So based on that, as I know how business is going, if people leave, you're kind of sunk in if they're not in between. You know, at the right time to like create a, you know, an appropriate time period to get into public safety and to counsel to approve. I mean, you lose out on business. And I think it's, you know, we don't want to harm any of our businesses and they've never had, as far as I know, any problems at QuickTrip. So I guess I will vote to approve this as hoping that public safety can figure, you know, the discrepancies out at this point. But I would make the motion to approve.
Yep, we, we have a motion already, so you're gonna vote for it?
My vote for approval.
Anybody else? Alder Person Lagaki and then Boersma.
Just a question of, in looking at these papers, I see that the applicant of the new agent applied on January tenth. And I'm not sure if I understand the timing of things. That here we are two months later and why are we rushed? And I'm not understanding what fell apart or why this is at this juncture.
I believe that's the date they put on the form. We didn't receive it until February twenty-sixth, I believe, if you scroll down.
So we didn't get it till the end of February?
Right, which was this day after our last council meeting.
Thank you.
Alder Person Boersma?
Um, yes, she answered my que, you answered my questions.
Okay, anybody else, questions or comments? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Uh, next one is R. forty-eight of twenty twenty. And this is a similar situation.
I'll introduce it.
Okay.
Introducing resolution forty-eight twenty twenty authorizing and directing the proper city officials to appoint Bradley Dillman as agent for Shakers Saloon LLC. Doing business as Shakers Saloon located at one eleven Chalet Drive, and I would so move.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Hirsch. Anything you want to add on to this one, Alder Person Jensen?
No, no. Again, I'm conflicted again, same reasons. But I understand Alder Person, uh, I don't know. It, it's just the, the process is, is what really, really kind of gets me. You know, I just, I want, I, I, I guess we really have to take a look at the ordinance and see what's going on here.
Yeah, we'll have to look at the ordinance and there, there, honestly, there may not be a good solution to this. Because again, we're not dealing with approving a license. We're dealing with approving a change of agent. And the statute sets it up to say that if there is a change of agent application, then that's made or appointment that's made by the licensee, that's only good until the next regular or special meeting. And then if we don't get a decision at that meeting, the license is suspended until we do get a decision. And we don't control when that happens. So we may not, we may not ever solve this particular problem and be able to, you know, make sure that every one of these goes to committee before it goes to council in a way that avoids this suspension issue.
I think it's worthy of a, of a, of a discussion at least in committee.
And I agree, and I think we should discuss it at committee and see if there's a, a, a way to fix the problem.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments on this one? Alder Person Hirsch?
Again, I would ask Chief Lux if he's had a chance to review this application and if he's found anything that we should be aware of.
Nothing in the current background would warrant a recommendation of denial.
Okay, and then again, like I had stated previously, as, you know, again, a business that we would like to support even, you know, regardless of what is going on in a different part of our discussion later on, I would like to see this business, at least for the, this period, be able to conduct their business until it's decided one way or the other on the other issue. So that's where I, that's where I'll be voting.
Alder Person Hiley and then Lagaki.
Um, yeah, I agree that really our decision in two weeks should be our decision. And it's been, what, three months since the incident in question? And I don't think another two weeks is, you know, going to have a huge effect in the overall safety of the city or whatnot.
Alder Person Lagaki?
Since we're not able to deal with this at committee, I apologize. It's my regret that I'm asking this question in such a public venue. But Chief Lux, in the application, there is a violation of state law that he said, yes, he did.
Correct.
And I believe that's a matter of public record.
Uh, it will be yes as a result of the application, I believe.
And I'm wondering if I were sitting in committee, I would be asking more particulars about the nature of that state law violation.
Yeah, and I don't have that sitting in front of me. But you can always ask Mr. Dillman what those violations were.
Mr. Dillman, would you be willing to come on up and answer my questions about if we're gonna act on this?
I guess I don't.
In your, in your application, you answered all of the questions thoroughly. But one of the questions was a yes, that you have been convicted of a state law violation?
Not that I know of. I might have, maybe I mistakenly put that, but not a state law violation. I mean, I guess what would that mean?
Yeah, you've had several, you've had some arrests for disorderly conduct, criminal damage to property. Those are state violations, along with the OWIs. Okay, and that's what she's referring to.
Okay, but that doesn't deny me from getting my liquor license.
No, no. And I, I, so if we were in our smaller committee and not at this large public group.
It's all open, it's all, it's on the WCCA, you can, my birthday's twelve thirty nineteen sixty-nine, you can look it up.
Brad, I'm, I'm asking you to tell me the nature of those state law violations.
An ex-wife of mine called the police on me several times. And they're domestic disorderlies, there's maybe another one on there. But that's what they were. I wasn't even present when she made the calls to the police. I was elsewhere. Due to our counseling that we had gone through, I was told to leave the situation so not escalate it. But she had escalated it to the point where I was arrested at my work several times and without provocation.
Respectfully, Brad, you, now that I've opened the question, you can speak to what you want. But I'm just asking without massive detail, I'm asking for the nature of the state violations that may be. Like the chief had sort of given a listing before. I just want to concur with you. So, so there might be some disorderly conduct, domestic?
Yeah, the domestic disorderlies, like I said, I was never even present when she made the phone calls.
Are there any others besides the domestic disorderlies?
I'd have to go through my CCA thing, I'd have to look, but yeah.
Yep, I, I, I.
If you got a list of it, I'd be happy to hear them.
Uh, that's not the nature, I just wanted to ask you to, I appreciate.
Again, I'm open, I'm open and honest about everything. And I'm not trying to hide anything. That's why I marked it as a yes.
Thank you, and nothing more about any of the state violations we might find?
This one?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Can I just have a moment, Mayor?
Sure.
Do you remember the statutes, it talks about the character? The issue is. All right, so the legal standard, just so you know, with respect to the appointment of an agent on behalf of a limited liability company, in addition to certain statutory qualifications, which I don't have any reason to believe are not satisfied here, the statute also says that the agent must, with respect to character, record, and reputation, be satisfactory to the issuing authority. And that is your call.
Any other questions or comments? Alder Person Hiley?
Uh, yeah, another question for Mr. Dillman. How long ago were these convictions of?
Gosh, my divorce was final in two thousand twelve. And the disorderly, I think was the first one, was in two thousand one. I think there was, the last one was in two thousand seven. But our divorce was final in two thousand twelve and she left in two thousand nine. So they've been, those disorderlies have been long past.
And the OWIs?
Yeah, the OWI was two thousand fourteen and the other one was in nineteen ninety-five.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else have any questions or comments? Otherwise, we have a motion on the table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
No.
I believe the noes have it. Go, go, roll call.
Caravello?
Aye.
Doom?
No.
Hiley?
No.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Jensen?
Nope.
Lagaki?
No.
Reeves?
No.
Schumacher?
Aye.
Bartlet?
Aye.
Boersma? That motion fails on a vote of four to six.
Okay, thank you. That takes us to item number nineteen, which is a discussion and decision on the format of further arguments in Shakers Saloon LLC alcoholic beverage licensing matter. It looks like we have three options on here. Who wants to walk us through them?
Go ahead, Holly. Um, so at the next city council meeting, on the agenda will be the revocation of the liquor license for Shakers Saloon LLC. And in that matter, each side will be allowed to present arguments, whether they, in the council's decision is whether to allow those arguments to be oral, written, or both.
Or none, or none of the above.
Or none of the above. And if you choose to allow written arguments, we have to set a date for filing those briefs. And I would recommend that be the same as my deadline for getting things into the packet.
Is that clear?
Okay. Anybody have any thoughts or ideas about this? Alder Person Jensen? You are the chair of the committee.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just, with the chair's permission, I just want to make a few comments.
I want to thank the committee. I want to thank the mayor, I want to thank Holly, I want to thank Attorney Reuter. This was a difficult task. It wasn't easy. It was a, it was a heavy lift for all of us. I especially want to thank Alder, former Alderperson Riley for his, his sitting in as chair. With his legal expertise, that was great. And my counterpart, component, or components of the committee, Jean, Ozzy, thank you. I want to refer the committee, or to, to C, which is the, where is it in here? It's the objection report. In that objection report, the defense is asking for both an oral and a written agreement. And I think we should do that for them. I don't see any reason why not to. The other thing is that I believe there will be a document that each of us will have to sign, stating that we read the report that was generated by Attorney Reuter. And that will, that will happen at our next committee meeting. So I suggest that you take a good look at that. It's a, it's a rather, it's a lengthy document, but it is very inclusive of all of the evidence, all of the testimony that was, was given to us. I thought it was well done. So my recommendation would be to go with option C.
To allow both oral and written argument?
Allow oral and written arguments. And the oral, the written arguments would need to be in clerk's hands by Thursday at noon, the Thursday prior to our meeting on Tuesday, the 24th.
Was that a motion?
Is that a motion, or?
It's a motion.
That's a motion.
Second.
Second by Legaki, was it? Okay. And did you want to elaborate on the motion anymore, or have you summed it up?
I think I've said enough.
All right. Anybody else have any thoughts about option C? Alderperson, Attorney Reuter, go ahead.
Let me just, let me just say a couple things. So I, I, I understand that my colleague, Rick Manthe, who's been representing the chief in this matter, I think requests that if Shakers is permitted to submit a written argument and oral argument, that he be given an opportunity to respond to that. So I'd like to set your timing up so that the, there's an, there's at least, say, a couple of days after Shaker's written argument is submitted, give Mr. Manthe, you know, two days to respond, to submit something in response to that. So, and I, so from a scheduling standpoint, we think that would be appropriate. So we understand what the argument is and have a response, opportunity to respond, or, so that Mr. Manthe has an opportunity to respond to that. I don't think you need to provide any structure for oral argument, that can happen at the meeting. But I'd request that you consider a briefing schedule so that the Shakers can submit their brief with their argument, and Mr. Manthe has, say, two days to submit something in response.
So you'd be looking for the defense's argument to be submitted by Tuesday? Tuesday at noon?
I would suggest something along those lines.
So that would be a week from today?
A week from today, at noon.
So first off, obviously, the council can do what it would like. But I would object to any argument on behalf of the complainant. The statute says that the, either the complainant or the licensee may file an objection to the report and shall have the opportunity to present arguments supporting the objection to the city council. So I believe only the licensee who has filed an objection, i.e. Shaker Saloon, has the opportunity to present an argument in support of its objection to this council. If you disagree, or if your council advises otherwise, the, so be it. Having a written response by Tuesday, I would, I would ask at least until Wednesday. I, I, I just don't see, I am, I'm out of town starting Thursday. So I, I mean, I can possibly do it. But to get a thorough argument to this council, I'm going to need as much time as I get. And I, I can have. And I understand deadlines and needing to include things in packets and things of that nature. But, you know, having at least a, you know, more than a week from today, to make that argument and put it together would be appreciated. So I would at least, at the very least, request till Wednesday, if I could. So, thank you.
Just a point of clarification. I think you were asking for him to have the arguments in by March 24th, not March 17th. I think you have that.
Well, the meeting is the 24th.
Meeting is the 24th.
Meeting's the 24th, yeah.
So we'd have to get it in the packet before, you know, the weekend if.
Right, so it would, it would have to be.
Done.
I'll just suggest, I don't know what the council's view of this would be, but I know the packet typically goes out Friday.
Right, Friday.
So if you could give Mr. Manthe until Friday, then you could give Shakers until Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And then I, I don't know if you're in a position to answer his question about the statute, or if we should leave that.
I believe the council has the authority to authorize Mr. Manthe to respond to the arguments that Shakers will be making. I don't believe that you're precluded from doing that.
Okay. All right. I saw Alderperson Boersma, and then Alderperson Jensen.
Again, that was my question, and Matt just answered it. Thank you.
Okay, so you were the one that had the motion. Is Wednesday at noon, does that work for your motion?
That would work for the motion, yes.
Wednesday for Shakers, and Friday for?
Friday for Shakers, Friday for.
Right, so be a week from tomorrow, at noon.
At noon, yeah, at noon. All right, thank you. As far as the prosecution being able to submit an argument, if I remember correctly, and my counterparts on the committee might remember this as well, I believe that Attorney Reuter was talking about, about that. And it was my understanding that both defense and the prosecution had the opportunity to submit arguments, closing arguments, basically.
I believe that either a party has a right to object to the report. If there is an objection, which has been made, that objection can be supported by argument.
Yep.
Shakers' position is they can support their objection by argument, but that the chief can't respond. I believe that the chief can respond, if this body allows that.
That was my belief too, and I believe that was the direction that we received from our attorney. I don't know if Jean or Ozzy, if you remember.
And I expect that Attorney Reuter will be at this meeting on the 24th to represent the council, just to make sure that, you know, my office isn't involved in advising you on the core issues here. You'll have a chance to ask him, I suppose, again, about the procedural issue as well when he's here at that time.
Okay, so there's a motion for option C with a deadline to be Wednesday, which at noon, which I believe is the 18th. Is that right? Is there any more discussion? Alderperson Boersma.
So Greg, did you, I missed it, I can't hear, I couldn't hear it. But did, did you, did you amend your, your amendment to allow for both councils to have arguments in this?
It's part of the motion.
It's part of the motion, yes.
It is part of the motion, okay.
Yep, so the motion is to allow both parties, one party has to have it in by noon, the other party has to have it in on Friday.
Oh, he did, he did amend, he's the original one to allow, allow it to happen, okay.
All right. Is there any questions or comments on the motion? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? None opposed, so that carries. All right, thank you. Yep, we'll see you in a couple of weeks. All right.
Mayor Director Gillingham has asked if we could move items 15 and 16 up the list.
Sure. All right. So we have two of them that are coming from finance. They had also gone through personnel and through CIP and through our budgeting process. So the first one is R45 of 2020. Alderperson Schumacher, you want to introduce the motion?
Yep, so Resolution 45 2020 authorizing and directing the Finance Committee to approve the position description and the hiring of one full-time and one part-time city custodian and accept the grade level of three from Springstad Baker Tilly with a wage range of 1545 to 2039 per hour. And so moved.
Second.
Second by Alderperson Jensen. Alderperson Schumacher?
All right, so the, you know, we talked about these in the CIP, about changing over the, the custodial, the way that we're doing that. So these positions are a result of that CIP discussion. Like, say, it went through both personnel and finance. So personnel took the position description, and that was approved there. And finance did the level and wage, and that was approved there.
So just for a quick summary, this position does mirror the custodial position that we have at the library. So we have a library separate custodian that's handling in-house cleaning and is a city employee. So this position will be graded at the same level with the same range. This range is the standard range that does not have any type of increase in it. And that range was the 1545, as Brett said, up to 2039. So same as the other position.
Okay. Alderperson Boersma.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I believe this, this did come to Personnel and was approved.
Not the, the finance took care of the grade level and the budgeting, and this was also part of the budget. And then you handled at Personnel the position descriptions.
Right.
So yes, to answer your question.
So it was approved, as I understand it unanimously, at Personnel?
The position description was correct. And then it's already been approved through the budget, the dollar amount that ties into our grade level.
Yeah, I, I mentioned it because I, I wanted the rest of the council to know that we had taken a separate action on that.
Thanks, Sid.
Any other questions or comments on this one? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that carries. R46 2020.
Resolution 46 2020 authorizing and directing Finance Committee to approve the position description and the hiring of a planning department engineer technician and accept the grade level of 10 from Springstad Baker Tilly with a wage range of 2323 to 3060 per hour. So moved.
Second.
This one did the, the same sort of thing, had come through CIP talks first, Personnel next for the position description, and then Finance for the, the level and wage range.
Okay, this one's just a little bit different. I want to give a quick update on this position. This one may be reevaluated in the future, depending upon what those duties end up being. Rodney did his best job with evaluating the position for what the, the individual that fills this position will be doing. But this is a position that may be evolving. So you may see this coming back within a year, once we determine what this individual will be doing. But based on the position analysis questionnaire, this position graded out currently at the grade level 10 with the range that Brett had said, and it's actually 3065, not 3060, as he had said.
Oh, yeah.
I just, just wanted to make sure we have it on record correctly.
Yep, yep.
Any questions?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, just want to repeat, this did come before Personnel as well, for just description and not the budget.
Correct.
And I believe it was unanimous.
Correct.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries.
Thank you very much.
All right. I think that takes us all the way back to ordinance 3 of 2020, second reading coming out of Utilities. Alderperson Hirsch, did you want to introduce this one?
Sure.
Thank you.
O-3-20 ordinance creating section 74-16 of the City of Stoughton Municipal Code of Ordinances relating to utilities and the creation of an ordinance for water cross-connection control. And I so move.
Second.
Second by Alderperson Jensen. Alderperson Hirsch?
Again, this is, you know, Director Weiss can go to this, but was she explained the last time with this water cross-connection and how I think we didn't have an ordinance to go with the state statutes or whatever it was? So I'll let you, Director Weiss can explain that.
Thank you. We've actually had a program in place since 2014. But recently, during a DNR sanitary survey of our water system, we, they determined that we actually didn't have an ordinance to support that program. So ultimately, this ordinance basically has the framework so that we can get into properties, do the cross-connection inspections that we need to do. If we have a situation where our customer refuses to allow us entry, ultimately, we can go through a process and actually shut off their water. The reason for cross-connection and the importance here is ultimately, because of our system is pressurized, you have the ability really to connect. Every time you put a hose on a hose bib outside of your property without a backflow preventer, it is possible the contamination could actually be brought back up into our water supply. So there's a reason which we need to inspect every single property that we have to ensure that there isn't that potential for cross-connection, for that, you know, contamination to potentially enter back into the water supply.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Sorry, one side note too, is that the DNR, sorry, Mayor. But the DNR did recognize when they realized we didn't have the ordinance, that was one thing I asked, you know, do we have to have an ordinance? And they said absolutely. So what we did is, they actually gave us a, a template of what they did recommend for an ordinance. We placed our information in, we did have City Attorney Dragni review that ordinance, and that's what you have in front of you at this point.
Alderperson Haley?
I had a question about one sentence in the wording. So under inspection, the third paragraph of the ordinance, it says, "Any unprotected cross-connections identified by inspection shall be promptly corrected." Do we think that it's necessary to say that it's the property owner that is the person responsible for that? Because earlier in the paragraph, it's saying, "A person, firm, or corporation who owns, leases, or occupies is the person who allows the inspection." I think, I think, at least for clarity, we could say the, the property owner.
Absolutely.
I will propose an amendment.
Okay.
So, "Shall be promptly corrected by the property owner."
I'll second.
All right. Anything else you wanted to add, Ben? Okay, Alderperson Legaki?
Some of this is my history, having lived in Milwaukee during crypto-spiridium, as well as just reading about some people getting their water shut off if, for non-compliance or payment or things like that. Just trying to put together my question and say, Jill, is, if water is shut off for non-compliance or something like this, what are the potential risks? Like, like during a time of health emergency? I mean, like right now, some places that are under quarantine, there's discussion of people getting their water back. I, I guess I just want to ask in light of, do we put ourselves at risk around shutting off water with non-compliance?
I don't, I, I, you know, I think that every situation is probably unique. We really work hard to never, particularly for this program in general. We work, we, we notice, we, we kind of beat down the door. We don't desire to shut anybody's water off. So, you know, this is kind of a last resort situation where we're now, you know, we went through, basically, our due diligence, our steps to engage them, to work with them. Particularly though, if we have a violation, we still go through that same process. But some violations are kind of more significant than others. Particularly, there is, with boiler systems, there's a backflow preventer that needs to be in place because the threat there potentially can be greater than some other locations. So I think we've got to kind of balance those. Again, we try very hard to work with every property owner, get in there, get the cross-connection. We actually, as part of our program, even the backflow preventers that I talked about, we provide, we will give them. We won't install them, but to get compliance and to ensure the water quality, the safety pieces there, we will actually provide them. So we are working, I guess, I think, there's always some risk, potentially, whenever you're shutting somebody's water off. But I think the risk as far as not shutting their off, water off, when we have these non-compliance and the threat of contamination is greater.
And just one follow-up. How frequently do people not let you, how often are people noncompliant by not allowing the utility in?
Not very. We, very small number.
Less than one percent?
Absolutely.
I'm good.
We are, we're a squeaky wheel. We really continue to engage. And eventually, I think it just becomes easier for them to allow us in than to continue to deal with us.
I'm grateful. That's a very small number. I don't have anything further. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. This is an ordinance, so we'll vote by roll call.
Are we going to do the amendment first?
Yes. We would vote to approve the amendment that was offered by Alder Person Hailey.
That's first.
Yep, that would be first.
That roll call as well.
Yeah, it just clarifies who's going to pay.
No.
Yeah, we do.
Could we have it read?
Sure.
Yeah, you have the amendment?
Yes, so the amendment was to add in the language under section seventy-four dash one six C to say, "Any unprotected cross connections identified by the inspection shall be promptly corrected by the property owner."
All right, so we'll vote on, we'll do a voice vote on the amendment, how that sounds as a compromise. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That carries. So then we'll go to the motion as amended, and that would be a roll call.
Aye.
Hailey?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Legaki?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Schumacher?
Aye.
Hartlet?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Caravelo?
Aye.
That motion carries ten oh.
All right. Ordinance four of twenty twenty also comes from Utilities. Alder Person Hirsch?
Sure. Ordinance four of twenty twenty to create section seventy-four dash two, parent F, of the City of Stoughton Code of Ordinances relating to relocation of sewer connections. An ISO move.
Second.
So again, this is, I'll let Jill explain because she does it so well. It has to do with a certain neighborhood with the, I think, the sewer connections being close to the river, and we need to move them up to a safer distance so there's no environmental contamination. But I'll let Jill go more into specifics on that one.
Thank you. We actually recognized as we realized, I guess, this year as we started with our CIP work, the need really on Prospect Street to look at moving the sanitary sewer that lies along the river and putting it into the street. When we started to look at a little further through the Utility Committee of how would we get connection to that, reached out to Attorney Dregney and said, you know, what does our ordinance say? What, how, what's your feelings? What is the mechanism for this to be able to occur? And through kind of our discussion, found that, you know, the ordinance itself was silent to it and felt the best way to approach this moving forward was to actually have a piece of the ordinance that would actually directly address the situation. I do say that at some point, we may want to look also, and I may be bringing forward to you a water version of this as well, just to have, if we have a situation that arises where we do need to have customers move over from one location to another, that there's a mechanism to be able to do that. And that's really what the intent of this ordinance section, this additional section really addresses, to be able to move those laterals that are now connected to the sanitary sewer that's on, basically that runs along the Yhara River now into the street, and have them, an opportunity to have some time to connect unless there's an environmental issue. If an environmental issue arises, then they would be put on notice and a shorter timeframe would be provided.
Okay. Alder Person Borzma?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I'm just a bit concerned about cost to the city or utilities and also cost to the people affected by this. And do you have any estimate, Jill, on the cost that it's going to be for the city itself?
Well, for the city itself, I'd say that we are looking at, I think, when we actually talked through this project, I'm not going to remember the exact number, but I do believe that we were moving dollars to make this project work from what we had originally estimated. So we had other projects within the budget that we're looking to not do that was approved by City Council to move those dollars over. That, the project itself has continued to evolve a little bit. And I think until we know bids, exactly what number that's going to come back at. So I think, I may have this number wrong, but I do believe that we, last time we discussed this, it was about eighty thousand dollars, I think, more. We did, though, allocate enough projects at that time. We had that discussion that it might have been in the, had a buffer of about a hundred and twenty thousand. It's additional monies, absolutely. But if we had a discharge into the river, one, we would struggle to correct that. You know, the last time that I'm aware that it happened, we were out there with shovels and addressing it very manually. The concern I have is that this pipe, you know, basically, there's joints every two to three feet on how concrete pipe is constructed. It's, we believe, at least based on even talking with the property owners out there, was probably built in nineteen forty-five or so, lives, you know, directly adjacent to the river. I think to do nothing and to leave that pipe in its present location is only asking for a situation in which we at some point will have a discharge. And there's no reasonable way that I can think of from a cost standpoint. I mean, anything's possible with enough money. But what we're looking to do as far as moving the sewer into the street, doing some other realignment, is going to ultimately be cheaper than it would to go back and try to, you know, replace this pipe as it lives presently. From the personal property owner's standpoint, I could only guess what that's going to be costing them. I do believe it's substantial. I think it could be five thousand, it could be more than that, that will cost them to realign. I think it has a lot to do with, though, if they're able to make gravity work, take their connection that they have out of their basement and actually wrap around their property, likely will be cheaper or less expensive than if they have to actually redo interior plumbing within their home. So I think each site will have its own nuances to make that happen. But right now, looking at that, they'd have a five-year window to make that connection. I was surprised, I must say, that even in the public, when we had our open house, I expected some property owners to be very, maybe upset or voice extreme concerns, and I didn't hear that. Not that they are necessarily maybe excited to make these changes, but all these properties along there date back to probably about the, I heard today, actually, one might be turn of the century. So that sewer lateral also that they own down to that pipe is in probably substantial need of repair. So they're going to have cost incurred whether they were going to be wrapping back around and creating a new pipe into the new sewer, or whether they're going to be putting it back down along the Yhara. At some point in time, that sewer lateral is going to need to be replaced. And based on the time that's passed since those houses were built, probably now is a good time.
Just follow, one follow-up. Do you expect any pumps or grinders or?
At this point, no. We've done a lot of work getting into a lot of people's basements, checking elevation, trying to do everything we possibly can to make sure that this works by gravity.
So that would, that would limit the amount that the, would, the owner would have to pay because I would assume that a gravity, a non-gravity system would be quite, quite a lot more expensive for a property owner?
Definitely a lot more expensive and then more maintenance. You know, always the concern is if you lose power or something else happens and that pump fails, there's potentially other issues that you could have. So we did work very hard to try to get into all these different properties and make sure, ensure that that sewer is deep enough to be able to connect and have gravity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just to follow up, Jaiman, I want to go back to Sid's first part of the question as far as the money that, is it the city or the utilities, or is that coming out of CIP, or where are those funds coming from?
The upfront cost of the project?
I can't hear you.
The upfront cost of the project?
Yeah.
I believe the utilities shuffled some CIP monies around.
Okay. So that's not on the tax bill, per se? I guess it's the clarification I'm looking for.
No, it's rate funded and it's in the CIP, but they did move some projects around to make it work.
Okay. So there won't be any impact on the taxpayers as a whole? Certainly, those property owners, you know, will have some, some impact?
Right, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments on this one? All right, this is, this one's an ordinance as well. So we vote on this one by a roll call.
Hailey?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Legaki?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Schumacher?
Aye.
Hartlet?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Caravelo?
Aye.
Doom?
Aye.
That motion carries ten to zero.
All right, thank you. I'm going to skip the next one. We'll do the two together for sixteen forty East Main Street. So we'll go to New Business, which is R thirty-nine of twenty twenty, which is the updated, the amendment to the CIP, and that comes from Finance. Alder Person Schumacher?
All right. R thirty-nine, twenty twenty, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to amend the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four City of Stoughton Capital Improvements Plan CIP budget. In the amounts of twenty twenty is reduced one ninety-seven, nine oh four. Twenty twenty-one increase one fifty-three seventeen for a net total of decrease forty-seven thousand five eighty-seven. This passed. So I'll move to approve it first.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves.
This one had come through the Finance Committee for zero, and this is a result of shuffling around some of the projects that were anticipated to begin in twenty twenty around the Riverbank project, but were expedited or moved into twenty twenty-one instead. And then there were a few savings in there where the items that were identified were no longer required. Did I capture that, Dan?
Yeah, pretty much.
All right. Anything else you wanted to cover, or?
No, we were making the amendment for the Riverbank work, just moving all design into twenty and moving construction out to twenty-one. And then we just picked up some of the low-hanging fruit that we knew had changed subsequent to the CIP being passed. So again, it's a, it's a net negative change to the overall dollars being spent.
Okay. And this is money that is yet to be borrowed?
Correct.
What's the timeline for that?
We want to wait until the bids are back for the street projects. So Ellers will be on-site tomorrow. We'll start walking through all the information I have. We'll probably see money in the bank end of May is what we're looking at.
Okay. Any questions or comments from Alders? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That carries. All right. The next three involve Finance and looks like Park and Rec. Dan is still here. So the first one is R forty of twenty twenty. Who would like to introduce this one? Brad or Regina? Take your pick.
I'll take care of that one.
All right.
R forty, twenty twenty, authorizing and directing proper city official to enter into a task order agreement with Strand Associates for the design and engineering of Rotary Park improvements. So moved.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves. Alder Person Schumacher?
All right. I'm going to give this one to Dan to talk about what is planned for the Rotary Park.
Jamie, got that picture I sent, emailed you. So the improvements planned for Rotary Park include a restroom with two stalls, a connection from the parking lot on, by the Opera House. So there'd be, right now, there's a sidewalk that connects Main Street to the parking lot, but there's no connection to the parking lot to the park. So there'd be a connection now from that, somebody could walk on a sidewalk all the way into the park. And there's also a planned accessible pathway down the hill towards where the restroom would be. So this is sort of like a rough sketch of the placement of the items. There was an issue with people, especially during like Gazebo Music, where they would walk in front of that last garage door towards the east of the fire station. And there is concern with the former chief of the vehicles being able to get out if there's a special event happening in the park. So there is a planned rail that would extend, so it would basically force people away from the garage door and into the park or using the sidewalk. The restrooms, it's a prefab restroom. There's, I think there's three different manufacturers in Wisconsin that make them, but the exterior can be matched up so it looks like the fire station. So it looks like it was there originally. It matches with the rest of the buildings in the complex. So it was budgeted for a hundred fifty thousand dollars, and the fundraising was matched, or the city borrowing was matched by the Rotary club. They continue to be a great partner for city projects and the parks.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Anything from Parks on this one? All right.
Dan explained it well.
Because I'm supposed to be a good steward of money. I don't think this is necessary. And I will be voting against this because I think it's excessive. I don't think we need it. I think the Rotary Park is fine the way it is. It's called Rotary Park and funded originally by Rotary. And I just don't think that this particular item is necessary for our city. So I will be voting against it.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
And the ayes will have that one. And we'll move on to R forty-one, twenty twenty. And who would like to introduce this one?
Looks like this is for a grant that we.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
This is R forty-one, twenty twenty, authorizing and directing the Director of Parks and Rec. Recreation to enter into an outdoor recreation aids grant contract. An ISO move.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Caravelo. Alder Person Hirsch?
This again is giving Director Glenn the ability to apply for a grant. And this one again is for the restoration of our Riverbank, especially when the Whitewater Park goes through. So again, it's approval for him to apply for this grant. And I'll let Dan explain more of what it all entails. Oh, this is, is this the right one?
Yeah, we were talking about the right one. So this is, this is for the restoration of the mill pond of any exposed areas. It's approximately about three acres of area, and it would be vegetated with seeds and plugs of native plant species. And there's also about roughly twelve hundred linear feet of Riverbank restoration that'd be included into it. This grant's every other year grant like the previous one that got approved two weeks ago, and it's due March sixteenth.
Okay. Alder Person Borzma?
Once again, I believe this is cart before the horse. I think we've, we've got to settle on the issue of whether we do something with the dam and whether, whether or not we approve the whole notion of the Whitewater Park. And I think this is premature. I think we should, this is out of order, basically, I think, because it just doesn't make sense to apply for a grant without knowing what we're going to do. So I will be voting against.
Alder Person Hailey?
Clarification, I think, is the, resolution says that we applied for the grant last year and that we received the grant, and this is entering into a contract for the fifty percent cost share.
I, I think you're thinking, there's another grant, there's the next item on the agenda is for that.
Okay, forty-one?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I got mixed up there.
So Dan, can you just explain a little bit? So the grant, you said, was every two years. And if we were awarded a grant, do we necessarily have to accept it?
No, we don't have to enter the agreement to sort, accept the funds. It's just like the next item on the agenda where the city would have to allow me to enter the contract and to accepting the funds for that grant.
Okay.
Actually, we are on that, that one. So I was mistaken.
Oh, are we?
So we are, just right now, the R forty-one, if I'm looking at, that's why I said, I think I'm confused with how we, this one is actually getting the approval to accept the grant money, the one sixty-eight nine seventy-nine. That's for R forty-one, twenty.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Next one. Oh, it's my fault. I miss, because there were so many in there, I misrepresented this one. And so, thank you, Ben, once again, for being on that. This is actually, we got the grant money for the Riverbank restoration, or we got the grant. Now it's whether we accept that money and actually go forward with the work.
And this Riverbank restoration is in the RDA property, and it needs to be done regardless of the Whitewater Park goes through or not. And then the other part of the grant funding is for the trail that would go through the RDA property connecting to Fourth Street that rode north of the Powerhouse Building. And the trail amenities, like trail lighting and other things.
It rode north of the Powerhouse Building, and, uh, the trail amenities like trail lighting and other things.
Right.
So this has nothing to do with the Whitewater Park?
It's adjacent.
It's adjacent to the river, but it really, it's, it's connecting the trail that's already, well, theoretically, it's correcting the trail in front of Elvenstead.
I'm gonna take a look.
If we would get the easement in front of highway, uh, the Stoughton U trailers. There's a little spit of land, but the rest will go around the RDA site. So you have this trail, and then we'll have the pedestrian bridge go over the man. So it really does, with or without the Whitewater Park, this needs to be done.
Okay, so it really doesn't have anything to do with the Whitewater Park?
Not this one.
But I will add, the, the Whitewater Park, this is a very competitive grant program, and having the Whitewater Park components into the grant, I could write those in even though it's in a later phase, definitely helped our ranking.
Yeah, I, I simply need to know if it's connected, and it sounds like it's remotely connected, but not actively connected.
We would have applied for this grant with or without the Whitewater Park, because you need a trail system in front of the RDA site.
Thank you, that clarified it for me. It's fine. I just wanted to know.
Nope, 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 nope. Sid, that's perfectly great.
So question back to Sid, uh, given that clarification, are the thoughts that you shared a few moments ago about vehemently being in opposition, do, are those moot, or are they still applicable?
Are they what?
Is it, is it a moot point at this point, and it's not the issue, or is it still applicable?
For this particular one that we're talking about, I just wanted to know if it's, if it's connected to the Whitewater Park, because you're aware of my opposition.
He's gonna save it for the next one.
So, so, so your opposition is not so much to this?
No, it's, no, if this is associated with the, with the trail, I think that that's a real legitimate thing, so.
Thank you for clarifying.
All right. Anything else on this one? Uh, thanks for writing the grant. Congratulations. It's, it's a lot of money, so, um, it's a great thing. Um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Uh, now we're at R forty-two of twenty twenty.
All right. Now I got this right. R forty-two, twenty twenty, authorizing the submittal of a state grant application by the Director of Parks and Recreation, and the two hundred and twenty-five thousand of the City of Stoughton funds for municipal flood control grant project on the Yahar River Park. An ISO move. Second.
Second by all the person Reeves. And go ahead.
And this one is just like this last one. It's just giving Dan the permission to submit a proposal for this grant money. Again, just like the, the proposal that we, uh, dealt with last time, where this grant is only available every other year. So it's really prudent that we get it in, otherwise we're waiting two or three years to get the money for potential, um, Riverbank Restoration in the Mill Pond area and along the areas. If, in fact, that we do go forward with the dam removal in the Whitewater Park. It's getting, actually, it's getting all our ducks in a row, that if a decision is made, everything is ready to go, as opposed to making a decision about the Whitewater Park and the dam, and now having to wait three to four years to get everything going. So if we do decide this in later meetings, we have everything in order, ready to go, which is great, as opposed to playing catch-up ball and losing momentum for a project. And so again, if we do, our, which Dan has been very successful, if we are successful in getting this grant, it'll come back to us to approve or disapprove whether we accept that money. But at least it gives us the option of getting to that point. So we're not making a decision on the Whitewater Park. We're not making a decision on the dam tonight. All we're making a decision on is giving Dan the permission to write the proposal for this grant.
Uh, all the person Schumacher, and then Caravello.
Just one minor correction in the resolution header. The committee approved it, um, two twenty-five, twenty twenty, and not twenty years ago.
What did it say? It says twenty twenty?
Around the date, committee action.
Oh. On the. You were really on the ball. I didn't even get that one. I was just reading it from the.
All right. Anything else?
Nope.
All the person Caravello.
And since we're on corrections, that, that first whereas reads, "The City of Stoughton owns the Stoughton is qualified", which makes absolutely no sense.
We'll figure out what it's supposed to say.
Resolution today.
We'll include that. We'll update it.
Okay. I don't know what it's trying to say there.
It's probably just, "The City of Stoughton is qualified, willing and able to carry out all the activities." You just get rid of owns, because I think it was probably from the other proposal that said owns the dam.
Who would've thought I typed that one?
Now it just says, "City of Stone is qualified." So just strike out owns the Stoughton, and I think you got it.
All right. The side of the table, who was first? I'm sorry, I didn't see who was first. Go ahead, Sid.
So, my question to council is, why aren't we talking about whether or not we move, move or change the dam? Why aren't we talking about Whitewater Park and come up with an, some kind of plan on this thing? Either a yes or no vote, that kind of thing. Why are we putting horses before the carts and getting ducks in a row, but not actually making a decision about the big issue, which is not grants, but it's whether or not we're gonna have something like a Whitewater Park, and whether we're gonna be messing around with our dam? So I'm, I'm just thinking that we're kind of, we're kind of not doing it in the right order. So I, I can't support it if we're not doing it in the right order.
I'll take a stab at it, and others can jump in. I think what we're trying to do is, we have a few things going on right now. We're trying to do our due diligence, number one, and that's to make sure that, um, if we find ourselves in a position where we wanna go forward on it, we do have our ducks in a row. We've accumulated as many resources as we can while trying to educate the public of what the effects of the Whitewater Park will be in many different areas, whether it's water quality, uh, fishing, flood control, um, recreational use, um, water level dropping, um, economic development. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to do multiple things at once, get all the information together. So when it comes time to make that decision, you guys can make an educated decision, instead of saying, well, jeez, we'd like to do this. Let's vote to do it. And we haven't educated the public, and we haven't gone out to see how we could minimize the cost to the taxpayer. So I think that's what we're trying to do. Um, others can jump in and share their thoughts, but at least that's how I'm approaching this. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Um, yes, but it seems to me that we're, we're setting it up for a positive vote on the Whitewater Park, because we have all this money sitting around, uh, from grants that we've got and we've received. It's almost, it's almost like it's a setup for having a positive vote on the Whitewater Park and the removal of the dam. And I, I just don't think that's a proper order.
I, I think it makes it a lot easier, more palatable if we have the resources in order to, to pay for a good chunk of the project. I think if, if we just said, "We're gonna do this thing, and we're gonna remove the dam," people would say, "How in the heck are you gonna pay for it?" And what we're trying to figure out is whether or not we can accumulate the resources to do that. Now, we don't necessarily have to accept it if we choose not to move forward with it. But if we don't, we'll be waiting another couple of years, and I think that's what these votes are about tonight. Some of the other grants that we received earlier really support not only the Whitewater, but really the RDA site as a whole. And when you look at the big picture down there in the vision of that area, it includes both. And the, the RDA area will be a much better development if the Whitewater Park is included in that, and as well as doing the master plan update at Matt Park. And that's, it's all pieces to a puzzle. And if it all comes together, we're gonna have something that's really special, and people are gonna wanna come here for that. And I think that's the types of things that not only the city's been talking about, but the community and the school district are talking about as well. So that's what we're trying to do. Um, is there a better way of going about it? I don't know. We're doing the best that we can. This is new territory for all of us. It's a very unique situation in the state of Wisconsin. We're learning a lot of things along the way. We're, we're partnering with the DNR to try to work through this stuff. And, um, it's, it's really not an easy process. So for those that have been involved, whether it's staff or committee or community members that serve on committee, it's been a huge undertaking, and I think we owe them a, a, a big thank you for their efforts. Go ahead.
We have, we have a lot of priorities in our city. One is housing. One is, uh, affordable housing in the city. Transportation is an issue in the city. We, uh, I, I think we need to be looking at, uh, thing, expenditure of monies that, that is going to improve both the quality of life and also getting millennials to move in, not have visitors as much as, as having an expansion of our community. Um, I think that this potentially, this potentially will be a, a place where people can come as a destination city, potentially, but it's not gonna do much for, um, I don't think, housing or having people move in, so. That's my opinion. It's, it's very, it's very opinion.
Yeah, I, I don't know. Time will tell. Um, I think, all the person Haley, did you have your hand up early?
You, you had the response covered that I was gonna go.
Okay. Sorry if I stole your thunder. Couldn't resist. Anybody else? All the person Caravello?
I.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I had, I just, I don't know if everybody was done responding to, um, Sid's, um, opinions. But, um, I wanted to just, uh, ask, Dan, it, there's a lot of work that goes into grants. I don't know about these more civic engaged grants. Um, do you find as a person who's attempting to create opportunities uh, for a riverfront, does this give you more freedom, or, um, does this create too much work? Where, where do you stand as a director with seeing the vision? What's your opinion about being able to possibly apply for this grant?
Um, well, Strand's actually working on this grant, so it's, it's my, uh, my part is pretty minimal. I've been communicating with them daily, but not as, it's not a lot, a ton of workload on this one. Um, I'll be coming back in a few weeks for another grant, uh, that, that we just, it's the same grant program we just accepted the money for. And, um, that grant changes minimally every year. Uh, it was a lot of work doing, um, the dam grant that was done a couple of weeks ago. But I don't expect to do that ever again. So, I mean, I think this, it's a priority to get the project done, or at least give it the best shot it can get done, um, just based on the feedback and our open space study that we did two years ago. You know, river, expanding the recreational opportunity in the river was a high priority in the community, um, along with trails, which is another, you know, the component that we just got the grant for. So I think as a director, I think it's very important to apply for the grant, so these things get done. Because I don't know if the city could just back on financially by themselves. So I see this as just a, a must thing that has to get done to move forward, I guess.
Thank you.
You're good?
I'm good.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. All in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
And that motion carries. Thank you. All right, the next two items are, uh, related. The first one is Ordinance Five of twenty twenty for a second reading, and that comes from the Plan Commission. All the person Caravello.
This is Ordinance Five of twenty twenty, and ordinance amending the zoning classification at sixteen forty East Main Street in the City of Stoughton, and I so move.
Second.
Second by all the person Schumacher. All the person Caravello, go ahead.
And, uh, this is a request by an applicant, uh, to change the zoning classification of the property at sixteen forty East Main Street, which is the northeast corner of the intersection, northwest corner, sorry, of the intersection at, uh, County Highway N and fifty-one, uh, from RH Rural Holding to Planned Business. And their planned business that they would like to put in there is a group daycare.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add on this one, Rodney?
Consistent with the comprehensive plan. You're correct. It's the northeast corner. Um, this site has been planned for commercial for some time, and this application is rezoning the property. The subsequent one would institute the conditional use for the group daycare.
It's the north, northwest.
Northwest.
Corner.
Northwest.
Northwest. Sometimes I messed it up a bit late.
All right, any questions or comments on this one? All the person Haley.
I'm abstaining from the Weeble World items. I'll just add, they take good care of my kid.
All right, and we'll do a roll call on this one as well.
Hirsch. Aye. Jensen.
Aye.
Legaki.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Schumacher.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Caravello.
Aye.
Doom.
Aye.
And Haley is abstaining. That motion carries on a vote of nine to zero.
Okay. And then R forty-three of twenty twenty comes from the Plan Commission. All the person Caravello.
And this is R forty-three of twenty twenty, approving a conditional use permit request by Maggie Gassner for a group daycare use at sixteen forty East Main Street in the City of Stoughton, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Didn't we just do this?
This is a conditional use permit. The other one was a zoning. It's the same property, though.
Oh, I see.
Yep, yep. Got it.
Got it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by all the person Hirsch. All the person Caravello.
And, uh, following up on what we just did previously, this is the conditional use permit, uh, requested to operate a group daycare, which is Weeble World, uh, at sixteen forty East Main Street.
Anything you'd like to add? Planning Director Sheel?
Answer questions, if there are any.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments on this one? All the person Hirsch.
So are they expanding Weeble World, because they were across the street, or are they moving Weeble World?
It'll be an additional facility. They're gonna continue to operate their primary facility, and they're expanding, I believe it was an after-school day, or after-school program is their focus on this new location.
They wanna do four K on after-school.
Oh, excellent.
And so they'll have two locations.
That's great.
All the person Boersma.
I did notice in this, it, it, on the second paragraph, when there's a whereas, I think it's the third whereas, it talked a little bit about parking. Um, I, I would have some concerns about whether there's adequate parking in this area to allow for a bigger and expanded daycare center, but, um, I don't know if anybody else can address it.
I can.
Yep, Rodney will.
Parking, parking is really limited in our city, and I'm, I'm just concerned about it.
Sure.
This is actually to place a cap on the maximum amount of stalls, because they wanna actually have more than what would be minimally required on a site. So this, all of their on, onsite parking will be met without any off-street, or on-street parking in this area. And as you recognize, there really isn't any on-street parking here, so everything really has to be off-street. Their plan is to future, uh, develop this site further in the future, um, and expand the parking as well as another building on the site in the future as well.
Follow-up?
Sure.
I, I raise it because I, I think we, I think we have problems with parking in the city, just generally, because I don't think we have enough parking. Um, and I, it's something that I think the council's gonna have to address at some point. Uh, we need additional parking. It's just, I think that that's one of the impediments to people coming and shopping and spending time in our city, because we don't have enough decent parking in town. So I, that's why I raised the issue. Um, I raise it generally, too, because I think it's, I think it's a concern for our city that we come up with some kind of plan for additional parking.
Anybody else have any questions or comments on this one? All the person Schumacher.
Rodney, I couldn't recall if the, the plot that they're planning to develop over there, was that the one that was adjacent to the cemetery or on fifty-one? I can't, I don't remember.
It fronts fifty-one, but it is also adjacent to the cemetery parcel, so it's full depth from fifty-one to the cemetery. Their only access point will be on the County Trunk Highway N.
All the person Hirsch.
I guess I have one more question. When, I believe Casey's was gonna go there, the, the neighbors had a concern about Casey's going in. Is there any concern from the neighbors of this proposal?
Um, we didn't have any public outcry that we had. We didn't have any public outcry that we had, similar to the Casey's.
You had a public hearing.
There was a public hearing, but not a public outcry. So, I think the concerns were mitigated. I mean, there's, there's buffer yard requirements and fencing and the like, I think, that the Plan Commission communicated with the applicant, and I think it was well received.
So, where, I think on the other part with Casey's, where are they going to be entering from 51 or N, or both?
The only access point will be off of County N. There will be no direct access to 51. That was an additional constraint to the Casey's.
Okay, I knew it was, I couldn't remember which one it was. Okay, thank you.
Anything else on this one? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Our 44 of 2020 comes from Public Safety. Alderperson Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety brings forward Resolution 44-2020, authorizing and directing the property city officials to issue a six-month Class B fermented malt beverage license to Stoughton Merchant Baseball, and I would so move.
Second.
Second by Alderperson Hirsch. Alderperson Jensen?
Yep. They've done this for a number of years. I think the chief can confirm that they've not had any issues.
No issues, yes.
Okay. Alderperson Boersma?
I've decided not to bore you.
All right. Anybody else?
Sobriety is never boring.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Unopposed, any abstentions? No abstentions, that carries.
Move to adjourn.
Oh, we still have.
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, no. We're not done yet.
We had a big one left.
Oh, gosh, we got one left, sorry. Withdraw.
We have a couple guests that are waiting. So, we're on item 20. Did you guys want to take a quick five, or do you want to keep going?
Going.
Keep going.
Just go.
Keep going?
Hey, then I'm going to take a bathroom break regardless.
All right, we'll take a quick two then. How's that sound?
Five, yeah.